Good evening and welcome to the September 8, 2022, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Vaughn. Thompson.
Here.
Weinberg.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zepun.
Here.
Spiegelman.
Here.
Bowe.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Veyhy.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here, thank you. Please note that Commissioner Carswell is excused this evening. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have any announcements this evening, so we will move to public comment on this evening's agenda items. And I will ask anyone present here in the room who has a comment about the agenda items for this meeting to come forward. She'll help you. I'm ready, but just turn it off.
Hi, I'm Joe Rooney. I live on Maple Avenue in Hardsley. And one, hopefully, I got a question about public safety. I think it's always on the agenda in the Commissioners. So I've been hearing some rumors.
Now, this part of the meeting is specifically about the items on the agenda that are listed this evening.
This is the agenda.
Yeah.
And the Commissioners are all listed on the agenda.
No, no. Mr. Rooney, the Commissioners' names are listed. You will have an opportunity to address the board about any general matters of township business at the conclusion of the meeting. You've come to enough meetings to know that the beginning of the meeting is specific to agenda items.
The agenda items mean anything that's on the agenda.
No, it means the items that are specifically listed here this evening. If you have a question about any of the old business, new business, or Finance Committee business, you are welcome to address that now. Otherwise, the general comment period is at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I disagree with that, but incredible.
Does anyone present have comments about the agenda items this evening? And if not, does anyone on Zoom that has a comment, please let them in?
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Nutterbrook. I, first of all, want to tell you that you are persistently in violation of the Sunshine Law that really, if you put 25 items on the agenda and give people three minutes to speak, that does not meet a reasonable time to speak. So therefore, there are many items that people do not have an option to speak on. And you have many ways of fixing that, but don't. You also have many ways of fixing the problem if people are unable to hear you because you have a mask on and you're not even leaning close to your mic. We have no way to let somebody know that. You have very simple things that you can do to fix that. So please fix it. This is really important. I'd like to speak to the Old York and Susquehanna item on the agenda that nobody knows what you're doing or how that's going. There needs to be full plan that we can see so that we can comment cogently on what you're doing. I am pretty sure that you have not notified even the next-door neighbors who would need to make arrangements if you're doing demolition and asbestos right next to their property. And also, they should have the right to be at this meeting or other places in order to find out if there's going to be vibrations that affect them and other things. The asbestos removal may be a health hazard that they should be concerned about. So not notifying the public and not notifying even the next-door neighbors is not acceptable. And none of us know what you're going to do. And what you do at that corner is going to affect people within a half a mile or a quarter mile of that if you're building a shopping center and putting in a bus station. So it's not acceptable to be doing all that you're doing in the dark. You are supposed to be operating in public. The second item I'd like to address is the elimination of the land development. So first of all, I had a neighbor, it cost him $2,500, I think it was, to put in paperwork just to move a property line so that a tree could be on one property instead of the other that the neighbors had agreed to. That was ridiculous. And even though you let the colonnade and Steve Klein not go to land development on the largest project that I think you've ever seen, you actually required him to actually put in paperwork to move that line. So number one, yes, it's a good thing for somebody not to have to go through those kinds of hoops to move a property line. But what you've done here is thrown that in together with anything that's 10,000 square feet, which I'm pretty sure Nifty 50s, if it does come back, which it's not out immediately now, I understand, but if it does come back, Nifty 50s might be excluded from that. And so that is not acceptable. You should not be excluding certain properties, and especially of 10,000 square feet, on a busy road with a neighborhood right behind them with truck deliveries and lights and noise and everything else.
Ms. Lehman, I've extended your time. Thank you for your comments. Any further resident comment on Zoom? No, thank you.
President Hecker.
Yes.
If you'll indulge me just briefly, I do need to speak to one of those comments because it is about something on which I've been working for a very, very long time.
Certainly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was planning, and I'm still planning, to make a very celebratory comment with regard to Old York-Susquehanna. But I want to make it clear to correct the comment that everyone just heard. Awarding the contract, awarding the contract for the demolition and any hazardous materials abatement, which is a standard part of any demolition. You know, any demolition, there's always asbestos abatement. It's completely normal stuff. Awarding that contract is what opens the door to making this, as I intend, as transparent and forward-facing, public-facing a process for the neighbors as possible. Once this contract is awarded, then the plans can be laid out, the schedule can be made. There's going to be a meeting where the neighbors will get to meet with not only township staff, but with representatives from the demolition company, find out everything that they can possibly expect with regard to the actual physical process of demolition and the schedule. They'll be able to ask questions and have their concerns answered. This opens the door to all of that. In addition, this also opens the door to the most important part of the project, which is, of course, the intersection improvements, turning one of our very worst intersections, Old York and Susquehanna, into what will hopefully be one of the best and most functional after the project is done. As far as any sort of land improvements, developments, anything like that, that is all for future stages. None of that can or will even begin to be considered before the essential part of the project, which is demolishing the derelict buildings and properly widening the road and making the intersection improvements. So President Hecker, I appreciate that time very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. We will now move on to the consent agenda. And for this, I will turn to Board Vice President Commissioner Matt Veyhy.
Thank you, President Hecker. I now move for passage of the consent agenda listed on the Agenda Items A through E. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We now turn, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we will now turn to new business. And once again, I will turn to Board Vice President Commissioner Matt Veyhy.
First item is Letter A, BOC-05090822, motion to approve advertisement of an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 146, Subdivision of Land Development, by amending and restating Article III, Plan Application Requirements, and Article IV, Plan Review Procedures, and adding Article VIII, waiver of land development to create additional exemptions of land development process to create a process for notification of property owners and residents regarding the review of land development application by the Planning Commission and to create a process for a waiver of land development. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners here in the boardroom? Any Commissioners on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter B, BOC-06090822, motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-024, approving intergovernmental cooperative cost-sharing agreement between Jenkentown Borough and Abington Township. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Weinberg.
Thank you. I understand that the Borough of Jenkentown has already approved this cost-sharing agreement. So I would ask that the board members do, or board members do as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter C, BOC-07090822, motion to recommend acceptance of the 902 Development and Implementation of Municipal Recycling Programs Grant, Abington Township, Number 202109241338, leaf and yard waste collection programs in the amount of $350,000 and designate eight signatories and a witness to each sign the grant agreement and supporting documents through separate accounts with the Department of Environmental Protection Grants Center. And I so move.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments or questions for my colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter D, BOC-08090822, motion to award the 1,100 Old York Road bids for the abatement of hazardous materials, existing structures, to Plymouth Environmental Company in the amount of $152,000 and for demolition of existing structures to BRB contractors in the amount of $168,500. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
President Hecker?
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you so much, just briefly. So yeah, this is very exciting. We are finally going to get to some visible progress on the Old York-Susquehanna project. Obviously, I encourage my Commissioners to please vote in favor of this agenda item. Once this is done, as soon as information comes to me about when we're all going to get the chance to sit down with the good folks from Plymouth Environmental and BRB, the neighbors will be informed. And as I said, this is going to be a very forward-facing process. And I want to thank everyone involved in township staff from Engineer Clark and Director Jones and Mr. Hassan and, of course, Manager Manfredi and absolutely everybody else who's been involved in this, Assistant Manager Waymire, so many other people. This has been a long time in the making and it is really such a huge step forward. So thank you, and thank you advanced to my friends and colleagues. Thank you, President Hecker.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter E, BOC-09090822, motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2198, updating fees for collection of delinquent municipal refuse and sewer claims on behalf of the Township of Abington and amending Chapter 92, garbage, rubbish, and refuse at Section 19, payment of fees, collection, Section E, scheduled fees in Chapter 132, sewers and sewage, at Article VIII, Rules and Regulations, Section 45, annual rate for rental, subsection 3, billings, payment of current bills, delinquent collection procedures, and fees for collection of delinquent accounts. Subsection 5, scheduled fees and amendment of the agreement for collection of delinquent municipal claims on behalf of the Township of Abington. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for my fellow Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the unfinished business of the board.
Thank you, Vice President Veyhy.
New business of the board, sorry.
We put you through your paces this evening.
Yes, we did.
We'll now turn to the Finance Committee. And for this, I'll call upon Finance Committee Chair Commissioner Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, we're going to receive a Treasurer's Report. So is Treasurer Blumenthal on the line?
I am, thank you.
Take it away.
Okey-dokey. So monies received from the various departments for the month of August 22 that were deposited in the Republic Bank, we had a total for the month of $2,991,002, as compared to last year of $3,437,083, with a decrease of $4,46081. Year-to-date, we have a net increase of $6,423,473. So we're ahead of the game compared to the prior year. And as for the real estate taxes that were brought in and transferred to the Finance Department for August of '22, we brought in $44,192 as compared to August of '21, which was $48,891, with a decrease of $4,0069, which is really nominal. We're still at the 97% level with 3% left to collect. I'm confident that we'll be back up to that 98% level by the end of the year with no problem. That is my report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from board members in the room? Any at home? Okay, thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal.
You're welcome.
Next up, item number FC01090822, motion to approve the July 2022 expenditures in the amount of $2,758,940.63 and salaries and wages in the amount of $3,221,328.12 and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of October 2022. And I so move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowe.
Yes.
Carswell. Spiegelman.
Yes.
Bowe.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Veyhy.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes, thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, item FC02090822, motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-0220, see prior revenue of township minimums, municipal funding operations, then will be your 2023. Witnessed by municipal 9,000 employees, leased and not yet more than 30% on construction plans, with $741,000,000,000, $3,260,000, $9.00 and $250,000.00 respectively. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from Commissioners?
I'm going to ask Manager Manfredi just to give us something quick on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. As the board knows, and every year annually, there is a minimum municipal obligation that the township must make to meet its obligations for our pension plans. There's a calculation that is made. We have actuaries actually draft those, and it's based on a valuation report. The most recent valuation report is of 2021, I believe. I'm sorry, 2022, January 1. And those amounts that were read off are the amounts that we must put into as a minimum obligation to each of our pension funds. And it's done annually. And you could see each one being the financial requirement and the obligation for 2023 for each of the three. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next up, item number FC03090822, motion to ratify NFP Corporate Benefits PA as the broker of record for all Medicare lines of coverage. And I so move. Second. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for my fellow Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next up, item number FC04090822, motion to continue with United Health Care as the retiree medical plan provider effective January 1, 2023. And I so move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from my fellow Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item, FC05090822, motion to approve the revised appropriation for ARPA-funded refuse truck. And I so move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. If there's any resident in the audience that wishes to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joe Rooney in Hardsley. I wrote you. Thank you, man. I wrote the President-Vice President an email. I've been doing a lot of traveling, and I wrote one to the manager. I was hoping to get a response before the meeting, but I didn't. Several people have contacted me about a Commissioner getting involved in a bar fight in the local neighborhoods. I'm usually the last person to know about everything. It's my family or whatever. So if I know it, I've gotten two or three phone calls and an email about this, and they ask me what I know, and I don't know anything. So what I'd hoped by writing the President and the Vice President an email privately, I'd find out that, no, that's not true. And then it would be put the rest right there. But there's enough people asking, and the rumor's going around. What I'm hoping is you can either quash the rumor or give us some details about it. Because we have a $68 million budget. I'm 64. I spent 23 years in the Marine Corps. So far in my life, I've managed to avoid getting in any bar fights. And I've been in some pretty dodgy places. And I don't know how many of you all have been in bar fights, but I doubt very few. So I consider that to be pretty bad headwork and a loss of control. I know what would happen to me as a Delta pilot if something like that happened, if I co-piloted something happened. I hope it's not true. I hope you all can correct me on that or at least we should at least have some explanation of what's going on. And the other thing that worries me is if this, in fact, is true, is that Commissioner fighting one of our township residents? So I don't know what you can say. I've got a right-to-know request in the Jenkentown Police, and I'll figure it out that people have a right to know what's going on with our Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Generally, we would not comment on any private matters. It's not the business before the board. But the Commissioner in question does wish to speak, and so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Hecker. To Mr. Rooney's point, I was myself the victim of a violent crime in July in a neighboring municipality out of Abington. This was not a bar fight. This was a targeted attack carried out by multiple individuals. There is an ongoing police investigation into the matter. No charges have been filed to my knowledge at this point. I would like to thank Mr. Rooney for making me admit this in public as my children don't even know that this happened, and I've been trying to protect them from that. And I'm a little annoyed that this has become some kind of a political pawn for the Chairman of the Republican Party of the Township. This is a deeply personal matter to me. I was just starting to get over this. We had no motive, and I really was not sure why I was attacked until recently. So again, thank you, Mr. Rooney, for making this a public matter when it's something that's so deeply personal to me right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Sit down.
Mr. Rooney, you've had your turn.
Sit down.
No.
I'm not, we're not doing this. Please sit down.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Don't apologize, Commissioner Vey. Embarrassed himself enough, and there's no redemption here. That was embarrassing. It was embarrassing, 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 embarrassing. So blatantly opportunistic. Ridiculous.
Are there other members?
Sorry, Mike. I'm sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. Are there other residents here who wish to speak?
Are you speaking on the St. Basil's? That's, yeah, well, next meeting.
That's next meeting.
Just a couple of quick minutes.
I won't let you go without sharing that. Don't worry. Yeah, no problem.
Are there any other residents who wish to speak to general matters of township business who are here? If not, I will turn it over to those who are on Zoom.
Mr. Tovin, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I have a couple of questions. Regarding what Jay was talking about with collecting the taxes, it looked like the property tax revenues were down, which I was kind of surprised at, if I understood it correctly, considering property taxes, there was a major increase this year. Is that correct? So that's one of my questions. The other two questions I have are regarding the Willow Grove Mall. Is that a dead, I don't recall seeing anything. Is that a dead issue at this point? Or is there more to come on that? And I also haven't heard anything. A few months ago, we were talking about putting an ordinance in A few months ago, we were talking about putting an ordinance in where anybody doing any work on the, for the township on major projects had to be, 75% of the employees had to be through an apprenticeship program. Is there any follow-up to that? So, those three things.
I'll speak to Matters 2 and 3, and then I'll turn it over to Manager Man Freddy for item 1. In regards to the Willow Grove Mall, at a recent meeting, we announced that the board does not intend to move forward to formally review the proposal that has been put forward. So, that is, that is off the table at the moment. The second ordinance you referenced will likely come back forward at some point. It has not yet, and those matters are still being discussed, but we will certainly advertise that when that time comes. It's not this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Man Freddy, as far as the first question?
I see Treasurer Blumenthal is still online, is able to.
That's great.
I could fill in any missing pieces.
Treasurer Blumenthal.
Sure. An answer to Mr. Tovin's question is not that collections are dead. It's probably a matter of timing. It's just that we collected $4,700, around figures less than we did from the month of August of 2021. But it has nothing to do with, you know, it's collections. It's not a matter of taxes like he thought it was, that even though the taxes have been raised, it's just a matter of what we collect each month. That's all. I hope I answered his question.
It's substantially less people have paid their taxes than this August than last August.
Well, it could only be one payment or two payments. It's only down $4,800, $4,700. It's a matter of time. We will collect at least.
If every property owner was.
Mr. Tovin, we're answering your question. This is not a debate.
Okay.
I'm positive we will be at the 98% level of total collections compared to all the prior years. That is typical of Montgomery County. By the end of the year, we will have collected at least 98%.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Manager Man Freddy?
Yes, and to that point, the 98% collection rate, which has been an outstanding job to collect 98% of all taxes due, is actually part of the formula that is built into when we're levying those taxes. That is a part of, that 98% collection rate is a part of the formula, so we are on target.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddy. A grace we can let the next resident in.
Ross A., you're unmuted.
Ross Abel of Glen Avenue. First off to Commissioner Thompson, just wanted to say I'm sorry you had to look at that. As far as what I would like to cover tonight with you, I'd love to ask the board to add a budget line for next year, whenever we're going through that, to create a more thorough update to the bicycle and sidewalk master plans, to identify key bull parts for protected lanes, with emphasis on connectivity between our parks, transit, shopping districts, and to identify funding opportunities. One of the strongest ways we can fight climate change, improve the health and quality of life of our residents, and improve property values is to support transportation alternatives and make our area more walkable and bikeable. At a fraction of the cost of roads, these pay off with big dividends to the taxpayer. Walkability gives the elderly and children more independence and overwhelmingly serves low-income and minority residents who are more likely to rely on transit and alternatives to get to work. And if having someone wants to attract millennial and Gen Z residents, walkability is at the top of desired traits, and more than 40% of Gen Z at 19 years old don't have a driver's license. Where can we start? Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia advocates for the Circuit Trails Network that some of you may have utilized at Pineback and the newly-built Delaware River Trail. So, beyond that, I would love to ask the board to update our accessory dwelling unit specifications to be less restrictive and support more flexibility for homeowners to meet the increasing demand for housing options in this housing crisis. We can model after many other towns doing this, and it would set us apart from adjacent townships. Additionally, again, I'd like to ask the board to open up Alberthorpe Park between the Arts Center and Alberthorpe, or increase the number of entrances so more residents can enjoy this awesome park. It's difficult to enter the park by foot or bike, especially with kids and the lack of sidewalks around the perimeter. And then, last item I'd like to say is please work with Jenkins Town and PennDOT to implement a road diet on 611 near Jenkins Town to slow traffic and foster a safer, more walkable community. This has been a plan of Jenkins Town for a while, but they need the help of the adjacent townships like ours to make it work with PennDOT, since they need a regional study to fulfill their vision. I'm happy to hear about the cost-sharing agreement, so I'm hoping with efforts like this, and if we can plan in tandem with the adjacent townships, it would be awesome to support this. A quick mandate for us in the area would be to slow traffic from 40 to 25 miles per hour and implement automatic enforcement, because right now, crossing something that essentially functions like a highway in a residential area where lots of people like to get around by foot or by bike, it's pretty scary. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your suggestion, sir.
Karen's Note 10, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm a resident of Hollywood, and I've been a long-term resident. I actually grew up here, and I feel sad because unlike the caller, unlike the speaker before me, I feel like we're destroying Abington one bad amendment at a time. We're destroying our zoning. We're destroying our structure. Our taxes are up 40%, and we're getting less. Crime is raised, crime is increasing. The person that spoke before me, you know, people are going to have, they're bringing people back to work, and not everybody can work out of their basement, anybody that has a service area job. So, the idea that things can be entirely walkable is really not, not one that's sustainable. I live in the Hollywood area. The traffic is awful. We have traffic from Rockledge. I understand there's apartments going up there. There's over 600 apartments coming on Somont Avenue, and there's apartments all over the place. But we don't even have jobs for people. We don't have services for people. Our grocery store is entirely empty. My husband had an allergic reaction. There wasn't even an EpiPen in the writing. So, these are the kind of costs, these are kind of the way your life will be if we continue on this trajectory. So, I please respectfully ask, think about how we're changing Abington, because we won't get the chance to bring it back again. It'll, it'll be just a terrible place to live, riddled with crime.
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman Meadowbrook. So, I think Carrie had some very good points there. There are places already where you have walkable, and we don't have a housing crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis, and that's not anything that Abington's putting in. Mr. Tovin, I'm glad that you answered his questions, and you answered them so thoroughly, but I wonder how Mr. Tovin gets his questions answered while other people who ask questions just get told thank you for your comments. That is actually contrary to sunshine law. Mr. Spiegelman, so first of all, contrary to law and proper procedure again, is to have a speaker speak from the public and then to have a commissioner try and totally undo what they said without any opportunity to address what that commissioner just said. What Mr. Spiegelman said was just absolute nonsense. If you have a property with hazardous chemicals, hazardous asbestos next door to you, and they are putting out a bid for the, you have a right to be at that meeting, to be notified, and to come to all of the, to know when the bid envelopes were opened, to know what things are in those bid envelopes. So, Mr. Spiegelman, it's completely egregious that you, that you don't care that these people are notified about what's going on there, when it's going on, and what they have a right to be involved in. And it's egregious, Mr. Hecker, that you allowed him to undo what I said, and no opportunity for me to speak afterwards.
You're speaking now.
I am, and the speaking rights for the next meeting coming up, you have many St. Basil's people speaking, and they do not understand that they will have five minutes in the beginning without knowing what's changing.
Stay tuned, Ms. Lehman. We're, we'll have an update on that at the beginning of the next meeting.
So, you will change that? Okay, that's good.
Stay tuned.
Okay, well, I hope, I hope that you will. And we would like to have all development meetings filmed. We have meetings, and we cannot refer back to something because you won't film them and archive them for us. It's extremely important. I think you know you had a petition with 500 signatures. There's an article now in The Reporter Online and in the Montgomery newspapers on the front page about our manager saying that all of the requests get responded to. It is unbelievable that he could say that, where not only again and again are people telling him that's not the case, but that article has pictures to prove that's not the case, whilst none of those things were asked just once. They've been asked sometimes for years, and he knows that he has people that have asked him to fix things for years. And so, this kind of nonsense and reporting something to the media like that, that's completely untrue.
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Steve Borland, you're unmuted.
Good evening. I'm Steve Borland. I live in, on Shady Lane in Fox Chase Manor. It's interesting that there's been some conversation about traffic in the township. I've had conversations over the past six years with my Commissioner Drew Rothman about traffic on my street. And every year, as you know, the Rockledge Township has a car show. This year, it's on September 25th, and every year, I try to get them to not direct traffic from their township down Shady Lane. Shady Lane already handles 8,000 to 10,000 cars every day, right? It's a two-lane street. There's no, there's no sidewalk. There's no, there's no shoulder, and they close off Huntington Pike for the, for the day, and all of that traffic comes down Shady Lane. It is just an example of the issue that, that people in Shady Lane deal with all the time. Every year, I try and contact the Rockledge Borough and ask them to not direct traffic down Shady Lane, to direct traffic, detour traffic through their own township instead. I'd like to encourage this board to contact Rockledge and ask them to do something about it this year, and I'd appreciate it if you could do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rothman, you indicated you would like to respond?
Yep. Hi, Steve. So, while the car show situation is probably not something that there are many alternatives to, and I've had that discussion with, with Rockledge before, I'll encourage them to take a look and see what they can do on that date. But I did want to share with you and planned on reaching out to you directly, Steve, but also to let other people know. I am in touch with the Rockledge Council, and we're going to try to figure out something on Shady Lane, because that is one of the streets that is part Abington, part Rockledge, and is really complicated, and there's, there's, yeah, of course, I agree 100%. There's a lot of traffic there, and it's hard to enforce it. So, I'll be speaking with our police and probably Rockledge Police Department to see what we can do. I don't think there's anything aside from an entire overhaul of the roads that's ever going to address it fully, but hopefully we'll be able to make some progress on that. So, you've got my ear, you always will, but on that car show thing, I'm not particularly optimistic that on that one date per year, it's not going to be quite a hassle, and I fully empathize with you on that. Thank you, President Hecker.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. I believe we have one other resident who would like to speak.
Rick Bruce, you're unmuted. Rick Bruce, you're unmuted. You'll have to.
Okay. Okay, am I there?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, the gentleman was well-spoken just now. I also understand the response, and I can't, somebody's in the same room, and I'm having a hard time communicating because I'm hearing myself. Okay, so, basically, what the gentleman just said is quite true. There isn't a whole lot that can be done for that one day. Perhaps, you know, as a, as a person who walks down that direction and also cycles down that direction, traffic's bad enough on that day, but, you know, at least if you could filter traffic, you know, offer alternate ways away from Pine so that it doesn't go down through that road, that would be a potential way of reducing the pressure other than the normal pressure on that road on that particular day. I'm very pleased with the way that the proceedings are going this evening. Everybody needs to stay calm and not be verbose, because we have a lot to do tonight. So, I return my time now to the floor.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we are adjourned.